Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with Chabados of Delmar together with my co-host Mark Cronrich of JbizTechValley.com and statewide news service. We have a very special guest with us, Mr. Jim Sano of the Albany Common Council. Jim, I can call you by your first name.
Certainly.
Jim, welcome to The Jewish View.
You're welcome. Thank you.
First of all, Albany is a big city. It's not New York City, but it's a big city. What actually, what district do you, or ward? Tell us the boundaries around where the area in Albany that you represent.
I represent the 9th Ward. And for lack of, I guess for easy sake, it's around St. Peter's Hospital and it goes down as far as like where the fountain in that area and it goes far west as, or north, I should say, as the Palladium Bowling Alley's in that area.
And that's the Helderberg Neighborhood?
Helderberg and the Scotland Woodlawn Neighborhood Associations, yes.
Okay. But the Jewish neighborhood really, the whole Jewish neighborhood, that's what you represent?
Very much so.
Have you had much connection with the Jewish neighbors and Jewish?
Many of my good friends growing up, since I grew up in a neighborhood when we moved from the South End in 1968, our next-door neighbors, the Rappaports, were good friends. Joel Picker and the Freedens, a lot of people.
What have you learned about the Jewish culture and ethnicity? You know, have you picked up certain phrases and, you know, have you learned about matzoh balls?
I once was chastised at school for teaching the kids how to swear in Yiddish. My Jewish teacher goes, "What's going on? And all these kids are coming up to the third floor and they're all swearing in Yiddish." I said, "Would you prefer English?" I thought that was an improvement from what the usual dialogue was.
Now, you were a phys ed teacher.
I was for 34 years in the school district of Albany and coached football, wrestling, bowling, track, you name it.
What's your bowling average?
At one point in time, it was like 190, but now...
America is a little better. I'm a bowler, you know.
Oh, we'll have to go sometime.
We'll have to go to the Palladium in your district, you know.
Most definitely.
So, what's the, so 34 years, you were in the school system?
Correct.
So, you got a pretty nice pension. Were you tier 1?
I was actually tier 3, but I had a city job that I had in 1975 and I went back and got reinstated to 2.
Okay.
So, yeah, it was...
And now you're retiring from the Common Council?
I am.
And we got a new council person, Judy Dochet.
Correct.
But, you know, when you left, it was, when you decided to leave, it was in July. You had just said, okay, you know, your petitions were about to be handed in and then you said, "No, I really don't want..."
Yeah, it was something that I'd, really, if, people that were close to me knew that really in March I'd made up my mind not to and allowed myself to kind of be talked back into it. And it never really sat right with me. I really have enjoyed being retired from teaching. And it just felt like it was time. 12 years was a long time. And I still felt very energetic towards the job and I will until the last day, like anything I do, I'll give it 100%. But I just thought it was time perhaps for a fresh pair of eyes and a new outlook. And I could've kept doing it and done well at it like I had the other 12 years, but I just thought it was time for just change.
It's interesting how you said, "Okay, I'll start the petition process, I'll go through this," and then with the thinking maybe the committee to fill vacancies might come in?
No, none of it really, none of that really came into play, to be honest with you. It was just, I debated and debated and debated and just looking at the deadline knew that this was my last chance to, either I was in or I was out.
And your wife, did you talk to her about it?
Oh, yeah. Just like when I retired from the school district, whenever I give anything up, it's not an easy decision and I drive everybody around me nuts.
Pushing you?
No, she was fine with whatever decision I made, but you know, one day I'll wake up and it was the same when I left teaching, you know. I loved this, why would I ever give it up? And then the next day, why did I ever go into it? You know, I mean, it's tough for me to ever to quit anything. Quitting's not in my nature and, yeah.
What was the worst, well, that's why we don't say you're quitting, you're retiring.
Yeah. To me, it's, yeah, walking away, quitting, retiring, but I'll no longer be doing it.
Did anyone give you a retirement celebration or a retirement party or anything?
No.
We should, you know, we should come to the, what, the Italian Community Center?
I was going Monday night to the buffet. It was a fabulous time.
You had John Marcelle, you had something for him and when he left as the city clerk and...
Very good.
It's interesting to me, I don't know, maybe you can find a common denominator, but I know that the mayor was a, he was a principal, was he?
Yes.
And here, you know, I'm just sitting back and I didn't even know, you know, and you're saying, "Well, here usually teachers don't go into politics so much." Maybe they do, I don't know, it's interesting. Well, they do. Kathy, Patricia Fahy was on the school board. I don't know if she was a teacher, but you know, that's, I mean, C.C. Kaczuk was on the school board, she was a state senator. I mean, you get more and more of the non-attorneys.
People around education. You know, it's funny, I remember when I first ran in 2001 and I was going door-to-door and it's funny you say that, one of the people that I ran into that known, had known me and my family, but only knew me in the context of being a teacher and a coach, and I says, "You know, all these years you were a teacher and a coach, why would you go into politics?" Clearly, they never taught or coached because it's nothing but politics. I think the funniest was the, one of the years when I was head coach at JV Football, I had my athletic director's son, the varsity head football coach's son, and the mayor's son, who was the vice principal at the time, all on the team. And I had to figure out how to get the three of them into the lineup and still win football games. Well, thank God, all three of them had great athletic talent and I think we actually won a championship that year. But I should've known I was destined for politics, then managing that.
Now, you were Majority Leader of the Common Council for a period of time.
I was, my first term from 2002 to 2005.
So, why'd you not become Majority, I mean, how did that work out where you shifted to someone else?
Well, what happens is, and they'll do that again in January, is that like Mr. Conti and Mr. Herring currently are President of Pro Tem and Majority Leader, is that the new council coming in will vote their new leadership in. So, that only goes every four years, although most bodies usually keep the same leadership. At times, they do, you know, change and that was fine.
And it's gonna happen again where it's gonna change?
Well, it's gonna happen again, well, they'll vote.
Well, vote, but will they change?
Change, we shall say.
But were you offended that they didn't?
No, not at all.
Who became Majority Leader after you?
Dan, Dan Herring.
Who's there now, so it was two, he's been there eight years now.
Correct.
So, I mean, they, someone didn't like the way you were being Majority Leader?
No, I don't think it was that at all, I think it was that...
I mean, but I gotta ask you, Majority of what? I mean, you're all Democrats, so there's no Minority Leader.
True. Being all Democrats or not, still you have to go around and make sure you have the votes because there are certain divisive issues.
But that's what the whip does.
Well, we don't have a whip, so that's what the Majority Leader is. You know, for the price, one hat fits all, you know.
So, do you think the council should be downsized? Do you think it should be nine seats? It's now 15 or?
I really don't, you know, and I'm pretty adamant about that. I think that, you know, back in the day, when I think it was more, you know, if you go back to the machine days, it was probably more legislative and probably more ceremonial because I don't ever remember in those days that they ever went against the mayor or even...
I don't think there was a no vote until 1995 or something. I don't think there was a no vote.
But I think at the same token, what went along with that was a pretty solid committee structure. So, if you had issues where a sidewalk was busted up or you had issues with code enforcement or this, it usually went to your committee person. If you got no satisfaction from them, then you went to your ward leader. The Common Council people usually didn't get involved in it much unless there was a hole in an ordinance or, you know, the law where it needed some tightening up. So, I would say that, yeah.
You know, the issues nowadays in Albany, I just, some people say, and again, tune me up, I mean, you're the authority and I'm just a rabbi, but I mean, you know, the inside story, but people say the mayor's getting out because it's getting tough and the budget, it's just too tough and maybe that's the reason you're leaving too over your inside ideas.
No, I think, I think it's just a matter that for all of us, it's time. I don't think the budget's any better or any worse than it's ever been. I mean, I think all cities are scraping to find a dollar. I think the thing that we did enjoy was the mayor's, you know, charm and personality and being able to schmooze up on Capitol Hill and get additional funding where other cities did not. But as he always said, the additional funding that he couldn't acquire wasn't so much the harem and campus. We didn't need the harem and campus. We didn't need the 19A even for the Empire State Plaza if we got the proper per capita funding that we deserve. You know, should we have gone bankrupt like Yonkers did and get, you know, almost $4, you know, $5 a person? If we had that kind of funding, we'd have an extra $35 million in our, you know, each year in funding. So, I mean, there's a certain amount of Albany that the funding is wolf, it's just not, it's wrong.
Because of the state-owned properties you're... No, no, it's a, it's tax-exempt property, whether it's not just state, but also...
But it's not only the tax exempt. You get a double whammy. You get not only the tax exempt, which is bad enough, it's known right, but in that tax-exempt properties, what comes with it is an influx of 100, you know, 100,000 people a day. And with that, we just completed a public-private budgetary commission report. It's still in draft form, but one of the things you're gonna find very interesting in it, and I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I know for a fact it's well over $100 per person that you and I as residents and taxpayers of the city of Albany pick up the tab for just police and fire alone for the people that come in every day to work. And that, that can't be. That just can't be. I mean, at some point in time, and it's the state is the bulk of that. You know, there's Albany Med, there's St. Peters and other large employers, but the bulk of that, let's be honest, is the state. And we get nothing for that.
So, could we have fewer police and firemen? Fire, firefighters, fewer policemen?
No. Not without decreasing that influx of people, no. As long as those people still come in, we had that, what you have to have is that we need that level of staffing because of the people that come in during the daytime.
The Police Department just went out with another exam and I asked the number-two guy in the Police Department, I, Will, what's his name, Cox?
Brendan.
Brendan Cox about this. I said, "So, at what, you know, you're, let's say, 750 officers now in staff total." I said, "How much, how much more do you need to be in order that you're giving out an exam, handing out, taking in the exam?" I think it's just a revenue raiser because you gotta pay to take the exam, but I don't think they're gonna be adding any new officers. So, I think that they're just having people sign up for the exam.
Well, the exam, I think, if it's anything like most civil service, I believe the list will be good for three years and I'm sure in that three-year time, we'll be doing, definitely doing some hiring because we lose between 12 to 15 police and firemen a year through retirements. So, I think that, you know, and then it depends upon if we call a class or not, depending upon where we are with the budget. Now, I'll look back and I'll take the Fire Department for an example. A few years ago, we were, it was budget time like it is now, but we just finished it Monday, that we were very concerned with the fire overtime. It was budgeted for 1.8 million and we're on par to, the expense was gonna be 2.6 is exactly where it came in. And $800,000 and we were, we were very perplexed as to how they could be that far over budget. Well, when the predication is...
They were $800,000 over budget?
Right.
The Fire Department.
Right, but this was a couple of years back, but the predication is based on, that number for that overtime is based on a staffing of 240. And they had not, there was issues where a list had expired, they were not in a position to call a class, they had retirements, so instead of being able to replenish those ranks and instead of being at 230, 235, 240, we were at 222. So, it's a tube of toothpaste. You squeeze it in the middle, it's gotta come out of one end. Either you're gonna pay it in salary and benefits for new hires or you're gonna pay it in overtime. And that year, we paid in overtime and what we did as part of the budget in cooperation with the mayor was go out and increase the staffing to 245. So, now the Fire Department stays at around 230 to 235 and now their overtime is back. Actually, this year should come in under budget at 1.6.
Let me ask you something, I don't know, just a radical thought, but you know, in Delmar, they have volunteer firemen, so I don't wanna get any firemen mad at me, but you know, I don't know why they're really needed. I mean, you live near the Schtebel on New Scotland Avenue and I see that, sometimes I'm there for hours, they're just sitting around, I mean, just, well, I don't know, I mean, I don't know their hours, they work and maybe there's more emergencies than I'm aware of, but tell me, but to me, it's just like maybe you should have a core number of people and pay people on a per diem basis, you know, if they come out, pay them a little bit volunteer basis.
That's certainly an argument that was made well before either of us made the scene, but I would probably advocate totally against that because if you look at many places now, they're struggling to find people to come out. I mean, especially you get conclaves of 300, 400,000 dollar homes, those people don't wanna come out and play firemen and, you know, not that volunteer firemen aren't trained, but we're talking about professionals and I would vehemently disagree that they should be unprofessionalized. I think that if anything, you know, when you see them sitting around, you don't know when they've come back from calls, they don't often fight fires. Fires are, thank God, a small part of the job. Emergency calls, they're constantly on the go, especially that house on New Scotland Avenue being located in Norwalk and having a very senior population, they're always answering calls. It's a very, very busy firehouse.
And Dan McCoy, when, before he became County Executive, was one of the firemen at that firehouse. Yeah, I used to go visit him. So, he was trapped, he had to be there on a shift and he couldn't avoid me. So, what advice do you have for Judy Dochet as she takes over? And were you happy to see, was she your favorite?
Judy was my pick, you know. Judy's been a committee person, Judy's been around Albany, Judy certainly, you know, knows the neighborhood and she's weighed in on many issues with me and I felt Judy would be good. Advice I've given Judy, I haven't shared her, you know, there's ways to get things done and of course, there's emailing the commissioners and then there's the phone numbers of all my friends and informants and getting things done even faster. I told her that I would share those numbers with her, but I think the biggest thing is is this, you're there, you know, too oftentimes, not so much in the localities, I think our aldermen and women are excellent and I think all very good public servants. You know, some will call themselves elected officials, but we're not politicians and I would, I always rejected that term.
Take exception.
And I think that everybody else is there. As I, first thing is that you gotta listen to the people and do the people's bidding. And I think that's one thing I've always prided myself on. I think I have almost perfect attendance at almost all the Neighborhood Association meetings. You call my house, I answer the phone. You send me emails and I told Judy the same thing and I think that's why it was easier to support her because I know that she has that mindset.
I'll vouch for that because I've been at those meetings and he's been there countless times and even with the Helderberg Neighborhood Association picnic.
I'll even stop, yeah, I'll even stop out of breath to talk to you after I'm done running, even I can barely talk. I'll stop and I'll lean in your car and talk to you for a half an hour.
And you stop me when I'm on my way to the Schtebel to go to services and he stops me and when people say, "Well, how come you're late?" They say, "Well, my councilman needed to talk to you."
Run something by you, yeah, very good.
Let me ask you about the, your Italian heritage, I mean, because Italians and Jews come from the same passion.
Absolutely.
Of their ethnicity and culture. Are you, and what's your position with the Italian American Community Center?
It's funny you say that. Last night, I just got voted in as Secretary.
Oh, Mazato.
But I was, I've had every post there. I've been Vice President, I've been past President, obviously President, and I've been the pool director there since 1979.
Well, being that you're a phys ed teacher, that's a good thing.
You know what, it's nice. I mean, that's it, that's what my parents spent good money to send me to school for, so I'm happy to share that, that talent and keep it a nice, safe, clean place for all the families to enjoy.
Now, Rabbi Simon wouldn't know about this, but you had a little bit of a problem about Jersey Shore.
I did.
And that's an MTV program that dealt with the stereotypical Italian, macho Italian men and women.
Well, it wasn't, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't so much, you know, the people, the people that get on air are the people that get on air. It's no different than Housewives or whatever. I mean, somebody wants to go out there and make a damn fool of themselves, they can go, "I don't care what ethnicity they are," all right? And somebody wants to film it. The exception I took to it was the desensitization of the term Guido and Guidette, which I thought, I never even heard the term Guidette, but a derogatory term in the next generation coming up.
Yes.
Of thinking that it was some sort of a term of endearment or a descriptive narrative of somebody like John Travolta's character in Saturday Night Fever, somebody with the slicked-back hair of Italian culture that wears a wife beater and I'm like, you know what?
I grew up in Bensonhurst, Brooklyn, that's what they were like, I'm telling you, they got it down. Welcome back, Carter, also, the Vinnie Barbelenos.
Like that or not, okay? The point is, is that I objected to the way that they sold it with the term Guido and Guidette. The way, you know, the show itself and the way they were on the show, the Italian heritage and culture, very little played with it. But so, why bill it like such? And a lot of those kids weren't even of Italian descent, there was only a couple, you know, so I mean, there was, there was a lot of things with it. I mean, you know, that was the big thing, was the way that it was built.
So, who didn't you like? Which character didn't you like?
I'll be honest with you, I...
You didn't watch it very much?
I tried to tell, I got better things to do, watch Mind Rot like that. You know, I mean, there's a lot of reasons I hate reality TV and the first one started with that it all really came about because of a writer's strike and being a good union person, I am, I resent a lot of the reality TV, probably the one I resent the most is Undercover Boss, where somebody comes out there and spills their heart out and they're probably making about $150,000 for a 30-second commercial and at the end of the show, they're magnanimous enough to give some poor...
$10,000 here.
Yeah, $10,000, it's down on their luck.
Let me, let me ask you also about the more local issue of the truck, the food truck, wandering Dago. I mean, is there, were they right, the owners correct that Dago means as the day goes?
No.
Talk to me about it.
I don't think, I don't think you'll ask any Italian-American that thinks that's any sort of term of endearment. It's absolutely a derogatory term. And I don't doubt for a second, I don't know those individuals, but I don't know for a second it got exactly the elicited response they want, which was call attention to themselves. So, that'd be about all, I'll justify that with.
Say what you want about me, just get my name right.
Joe Pine, right? Wasn't that Joe Pine? Friday nights.
You know, Jim, I'd like to go back to your teaching. Interesting, I know my mother, well, she just passed away actually just a few months ago, but, and she's older than you, she was older than you, but she said, "When I first started teaching, children would sit down, put their hands folded, you know, and it just, even during the years, you could see how..." They weren't bad kids, but you know, they had total respect, so, you know, teaching for over 30 years, so maybe you could see a spectrum, you know, from what children were like. I mean, was there difference in your ideas? Do they respect teachers or?
I think, I think there was, I think there was always gonna be difficult students. I don't care what era you taught in. I think the biggest change, kids are gonna be kids. I remember when I was a kid in school, I mean, if we had a teacher that would let us get away with bloody murder, we'd get away with bloody murder, you know, and I think that that was just the way it was. If there was a teacher that we knew was gonna get back to our parents and we had to be accountable for ourselves, we sure as heck didn't fool around in that class.
You know what, even with the internet, word got back faster than tweeting today. I'll tell you, it really did.
Absolutely. And I think that, you know, and I think that, you know, kids are, you know, will give you what you demand of them. And I think that as a teacher, I always demanded respect and I always gave respect. So, I don't, I never had that issue, but we had difficult students. And you know, you had to remember something, that they didn't come from, thank God, the backgrounds that we were lucky enough to have, to have good parents that demanded the best from us as well. Not that we always gave it to them, but we tried.
I'm just saying nowadays, I'm just, I'm asking because you're the expert, you're hands-on, so you know, like there's more divorce nowadays. So, I mean, you know, and then they say, "Well, there's a lot of problems with kids from divorce, so maybe that's a factor or more drugs nowadays."
I think, I think the thing is, is that, you know, from my perspective, where I was is that very seldom do we get to know, as I got there more years, I may have known the history because I started having kids of children that I taught and I knew mom and dad because I taught them and I knew it was time to retire when I knew grandma and grandpa. And I was like, "My God, I taught you..." You know, I, thank God, I never taught grandparents, but they might've went to school with me.
How old are you?
I'm 57, I just turned 57 September.
Very nice, well, happy birthday, many more.
And, you know, so I mean, I think the biggest thing was, is that, and that's why I went into phys ed, is luckily enough, some of the toughest kids in school, I mean, struggled in math and English and the other core subjects, were fine with me and they were on, and they were on par where, and the thing was always my philosophy, I didn't care half as much what the ball, you know, the kid was doing with the ball as much as what the ball was doing for the kid. Where are you going with this? You think you're gonna play pro sports? Well, you're not. I hate to burst your bubble, you know, and, but, and a lot of kids, you know, thank God, Florida sports because they did see the light and did pick up the, you know...
So, you know, I teach Hebrew subjects, you know, I'm Jewish, so, I mean, the Jewish area, and I always felt, and you know, I mean, they don't have such a strong phys ed program because they're more in studies and we have to have a Hebrew and an English program, but I always felt, I mean, as a student and also now as a teacher, that sports can give a lot of character to people, just to get along and, hey, you give the ball to someone else, hey, don't be a hog, you know, or just, hey, you lost, you know, pick yourself up and go. And I just thought there's so many good things that, you know, in organized sports and give to kids, so...
Absolutely. I mean, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, all the, it's life. It's all the good things and all the bad things. I mean, if you work hard, you try your best, you know, it's not whether you win a Lowe's, it's how you play the game and, you know, that's one of the more radical concepts in sports today. Now, it is all about winning and...
What's your favorite sports team?
My favorite sports team?
Baseball.
Oh, come on now.
No, I'm serious, baseball.
This is a tough year to ask me that for the Yankees.
Yankees? And what about football?
I'm a real odd duck when it comes to football, the Giants and the Jets.
Not Bills?
No.
The Bills are only New York State team. The Giants and the Jets.
I don't dislike, you asked my favorite, I don't dislike the Bills, I love all football.
You like all football?
I love all football.
That's a very political answer.
I love all baseball. Now, if you know, you know me well enough, Mark, you know I've been to every baseball park in the United States, so...
Really? You're like, you do it specifically because you travel and while you're there?
No, no, we go specifically for the baseball parks and then we take into cities.
I have a friend who does that also, yeah.
It's been a lot of fun.
I was, when I was a kid, I said, "Well, I'm gonna go to every state."
My best man and I thought that would be what we'd do when we got out of college. He decided to stay in a five-year program, so relegated me to getting married and doing it with my wife and children and now my middle brother, John.
Let me ask you now, we have a few minutes left. What was your most significant piece of legislation that you're most proudest of as you leave the legislature that you could say, "Wow, this is really making a change"?
I don't know so much as legislation, but I think support for getting Norwalk started. But I think that the greatest thing I think we did was saving Academy Station Post Office because we lost Delaware, we lost Pine Hills and I had a heck of a time because I believed that those people, I wasn't involved in that fight, but you have to fight and use their own arguments against themselves. And they were going with a financial argument. And financial argument was that the post office at Academy did not make $600,000.
And take in, not, you know, whatever.
Revenue, $600,000 in revenue and that somehow became this false magic number. number. So I went back and I had, I had to sue them and thank God for Paul Tonko as our representative and it was the only way I was gonna get that data, because everybody was assuming that it was because of the internet that that's why they were, the numbers were going down. It was absolutely quite the contrary. Those numbers had actually gone up every year since the internet came about. The only time that those numbers went down was in two thousand and eight and nine, when we had the financial meltdown. In two thousand and ten it came back even a little bit, but still did not hit that six hundred thousand number.
Now it's up there.
Yeah, their, their expenses.
So that's a community thing, that, that you're proud of.
But they have a legal right, I mean, it's interesting because you're a city and you tell the federal government, a federal agency, hey, you better stay here.
Well, we're trying to show the, show them the importance of what, how central it was to our neighborhood and especially being in Norwalk with so many of our retired people that don't have internet or don't use the internet, I mean, every time.
And they just like going to the post office to socialize.
We pay, we pay.
It really is.